Good evening, everyone. Meeting will come to order and we'll begin our school committee meeting tonight. Is there anyone here to offer a comment to the public or public comment? We just called it to order, Jennifer. You haven't missed anything. Yeah, we'll move on. We'll move on for the good of the organization. And I know that Alice has something she'd like to offer tonight.
I attended the first meeting of the High Quality Career and College and Career Pathways Committee, which is a state committee which is actually going to be advising on the Perkins funding for this year. And they met on October 30th. I have met with Ed in November and explained everything that I learned from that. But it's worth knowing that Perkins money, as far as I can tell, the Perkins funding is going to be partly used for the Innovation Pathway project that they're cooking up. And it's -- Chapter 74 is under Chapter 70 right now and doesn't have any line items under it. And they are talking about subdividing Chapter 74 so that they can use money from that for these programs as well. And as far as I can tell, they expect the bottom line for Chapter 70 to be increased by the state, but I think that's a bit of a long shot. So I'm a little worried about the funding. The MAVA guys were also present and aware of the issue. Everybody in the room was worried about it, actually. So, you know, I'm going to go again. It turns out it's February 14th is their next meeting, so I'm going to go again to that. But I just thought I'd report in.
Thank you, Alice. Carrie?
The week after Thanksgiving, I attended a meeting where middle school parents were invited to meet with George about Minuteman, Parents of Interested Students. I was disappointed by how few parents were there, but extremely pleased by the insightfulness, the in-depth of their questions, their curiosity, and even more so by staff's response. I also noticed at the end, towards the end, which went much longer than I thought it would, that the evening custodian from the school was leaning up at the back and really very, very interested in what Minuteman was doing. And I got to talk with him a little bit afterwards, too. So that was, interesting side note. The following Saturday morning, Concord had its annual foreshadowing town meeting where somebody from every committee that will have an article on the warrant comes and explains what's going on. Now, our warrant article this year will be straight up budget, but it did give me an opportunity to make a exactly seven-minute presentation. And I concentrated on, I called it "What a Difference a Year Makes," so that I had one slide with last year and this year. And putting it together that way, I was surprised myself how much very good news I could cram into a seven-minute presentation and just let the budget be the budget. So it was very interesting.
Alice?
I should have explained that the state is under pressure from Perkins V, which is the latest iteration of the federal Perkins legislation, to address the needs of the very large percentage of kids who don't get any vocational education. So like 20, 28% of kids get vocational education in their schools or through their regional district or whatever. But there's, and then there's some kids who go to college. And there's this huge population of kids that they know need more, but they're not getting it. And the biggest problem that they have is how to scale a program for those kids. Like, how do you do that? And they're interested in the collaboration with the existing vocational schools. They want to have more access to vocational education, but they, it is a real quandary. Like, how do you provide more pathways for all those kids? Because it's a lot of kids. So, just so you can think about it, like, how would you do that? That's what they're trying to figure out.
Well, keep us posted if you, as it goes along. Thank you. I just wanted to mention one thing that the officers had talked to Julie about, the possibility of having everything that goes in the Agenda Packet online for our future reference. And I guess it's not quite as simple as, to do it isn't as simple as I perhaps assumed it was. But Julie is working that, working on that to see if we can have, for instance, tonight's packet was a very thick one, heavy one, extensive one. But rather than, I don't know what you do with all the extra pieces that you get, I just sort of pile them up. And then it's difficult for me to go back and find out, to retrieve them, let's say, individually. So Julie is working on putting the whole, each Agenda, each whole Agenda Packet online so that we can go back and use as a reference. It's not quite ready yet, but when it is, we'll let you know. Yes, Jeff?
You know, an alternative, if there are legal issues with that, is sending us PDFs, as you do, and just save the PDFs in a folder. And you have a very easy way to have them without worrying about some of the issues you may be concerned with. So you can save the, download the PDFs, and then you just have one little folder which you can store the Agendas forever.
I'm not sure if it was, were there legal issues, Julie? Can you tell us what some of the, what's taking the time, let's say? Jeff was talking about legal issues of?
Different avenues that we were looking into.
I'm sorry?
Different avenues we were looking into on how to do it.
Ways to do it, as opposed to, yeah, yeah. But that's still a good point, Jeff. Thank you. Ford?
Yeah, I think it's the same thing, Jeff. I save them all. I have them all for, I've been here and it's right on my computer. So, you know, you send them by computer, it's an email, you just save it.
But sometimes we get things at the table that we don't have that way. Yeah, I save all of them, too. Everything that I get online, I save, yeah. So we'll see how it goes. Thank you. Okay, moving along. I'd like to welcome once again Cheryl Stevens-Burke of Melanson Heath, who will take us through the financial report that has been assembled. I think we've all, everyone on the committee has met you before, so if I'm not mistaken. But welcome again.
Thank you. And thank you, Kevin and Michelle, for the assistance provided during the audit. It went very smoothly this year, and I'm here to do a brief overview of your audited financial statements and answer any questions that you have. So, starting with the annual financial statements, that's the bound blue copy that you have. I'm going to talk about the independent auditor's report. That is a couple pages in. On page two, middle of the page, is the opinion paragraph. This is our opinion on your financial statements for fiscal 2018. It's an opinion on the district itself, and it also includes an opinion on the retirement system as of December 31st, 2017. This opinion is what is called a clean or unmodified audit opinion. It says that we believe your financial statements are materially fairly stated in accordance with the accounting principles. And in order to get that clean opinion in fiscal 2018, we had to implement two new GASBIs, Governmental Accounting Standards Boards pronouncements, GASB 74 and GASB 75. And I'll talk a little bit more about those as we go along. I'm going to jump from page two right to page 10. And this is the statement of net position. They're, I'm starting to call this GASBIs page in the financial statements because it has all of the newly implemented GASBIs included in it. The newest one is up towards the bottom of the page in the non-current section. The net OPEB liability, you'll see $22,795,002. That's the unfunded liability that relates to allowing, from allowing your retirees to participate in your health insurance programs. And previously, there was a liability there, but it was a different figure. Under GASB 45, what the requirement was only to put an incremental amount of the total liability on this page of the financial statements. Now governmental entities are required to put the full amount of the liability on the books. Another significant item on this page, just wanted to mention, is the net pension liability. That's the number right above that, the $1,201,001. So that's the liability that exists, the net liability that exists for your retirees related to the pension system. And I think it's important to point out that your system is 92% funded, which is excellent. You hardly ever see that. And that information, all that detailed information is included in the back of the The next page is the, yep?
Just a question. With the change to 74 and 75, is that the reason why we just see one year? Because usually I'm used to seeing, you know, the current year and the previous year side by side. Or is that just your presentation?
The presentation on this page is typically the single year where you see comparative information on the government-wide is in the previous pages in the, what they call the MDNA or Management's Discussion and Analysis Section. So that gives you a comparison on the government-wide basis. With respect to comparison on those unfunded liabilities, the net OPEB liability and the net pension liability, there are supplementary pages in the back of the report that are intended to give a trend to show that. Can I answer your question?
I'm just responding to other nonprofits where I'm just used to seeing these tables with, you know, with two years rather than a single year.
Yeah, nonprofit organizations, they follow FASB. Governmental follows GASB. And GASB is its own set of rules. But again, if you look in the MDNA section, that does give you a year-to-year comparison. On page 11, so that's, the page 11 is the statement of activities. And this is the long-term perspective. Again, this is, these two pages are what I'm starting to call GASBIs reports. These are the, everything related to the district, all summarized into one column on that previous page that we just looked at. So your general fund, your stabilization, capital projects, revolving funds, grant funds, everything. And that's the requirement under the reporting standards. And everything on these two pages is on the full accrual basis. So you have all of the long-term assets and liabilities on these pages. So your new capital project that you're involved with in 2018, on your budget basis, you would expense all of those capital purchases. But for this method of accounting, you put those on the balance sheet and you depreciate them over time. So there's significant differences in presentation. On page 12, so those first two pages with the long-term perspective. On page 12 is the short-term perspective, and this is the fund basis. And you can see the columns going across the top of the page. Those are the funds. So this is the short-term basis. There's no long-term items here, no fixed assets. All of your capital asset purchases are expensed, no long-term liabilities like OPEB or pension or compensated absences. Proceeds from debt comes in as a revenue source instead of being shown as a liability in the previous presentation. So you have the general fund column and the capital projects fund column. Those are considered to be major funds, and that's just a calculation, an accounting calculation. But it's a requirement in the reporting standard to show major funds separately on the fund basis of accounting. All of your other funds that don't calculate as major fall in that non-major governmental funds column. So that represents your grants and revolving funds. Down on the bottom of the page are the fund balance categories. And under GASB 54, there are five possible categories of fund balance, and you have four of them. If you look in the general fund, you have restricted, committed at $458,200, and that represents your building stabilization fund. The assigned figure of $3,978,424 represents $540,000 that you've budgeted to use in fiscal 19, plus the remainder is related to tuition that you're going to be using for your budget in the 19. And then the unassigned figure of $824,624, that is what is commonly referred to in Massachusetts as E&amp;D, or really, it's the E&amp;D starting point. So when you go to submit that information to the state, that's kind of where they start. And then if you have any negatives or deficits, like you see in the non-major governmental funds, $36,455, that's a possible area where they may reduce that number before certifying your E&amp;D. Your E&amp;D figure based on this information is at 4%, so it's within the 5%. And looking back a couple of years, it's consistently been at 4% for the last few years.
And that's a number that doesn't have the 540 that is in?
Correct.
That is in the assigned.
Right. That's extracted out, so that's included in the assigned number above. There's actually a footnote disclosure, I'll see if I can quickly find it, that does give a better breakdown. That's on page 32. That shows the breakdown of the assigned fund balance categories. So you can see that there. Couple of other things to note. That capital projects fund in the middle of the page, you've got some big numbers there. You're well into your project as of June 30, 2018. And then I mentioned in the non-major governmental funds, you do have deficits of certain funds at $36,455. At that point in time, that was mostly from your food service fund. There's some other timing differences and things like that. Question? Skipping over page 13, that's just a reconciliation. So the reconciliation page just explains what the differences are between the short-term fund basis and the long-term government-wide. And again, it's those long-term assets and liabilities. And then if you look on page 14, this is the fund basis income statement. And at the bottom of the page, the third lineup from the bottom, is the change in fund balance. So in the general fund, $241,580, so pretty close to break even. Going across the page towards the right, in capital projects, $12,615,777. And a lot going on in the capital projects in fiscal 18. Up at the top of the page, you have intergovernmental revenues, $10,949,804. That's MSBA money. Middle of the page, you spent about $35 million on the capital project. And you had bond proceeds of about $36,500. So a lot going on in that project in 18. Page 15 is another reconciliation. Another key page is page 16 of the financial statements. This is the general funds budget versus actual page. On the far right-hand corner is the variance column. Up at the top, you can see that revenues came in at positive $399,100. And then going down to the bottom of the page, unexpended appropriations at $3,901,500. So pretty much dead even on appropriations. On page 17, page 17 are where the fiduciary funds are. So these are not part of the fund basis financial statements because you're acting in a fiduciary capacity for these funds. The first column is the pension and OPEB trust funds. In 2017, you had an amount set aside for your OPEB trust fund that was reflected in your general fund. It was a restricted fund balance. That's been moved over to a fiduciary fund. It's included in the pension and OPEB trust funds column. GASB is, don't ask me why, but it doesn't make sense to me that GASB requires you to combine the pension and OPEB trust fund into that one column, whereas when I look at it, I like to see things separately because they're just definitely do two different things. But that's a requirement. The middle column, private purpose trust funds, those are scholarship funds. And then to the right are the agency funds or student activity funds. There is a new GASB pronouncement that will be effective for fiscal 2020 related to what is now called agency funds or your student activity funds. Instead of showing your agency funds, just like you have here with the cash and an offsetting liability due to student groups, there's going to be a requirement to have an income statement, part of it. So you'll need to show revenues and expenses and a fund balance, similar to other governmental funds. Good news is, is that in terms of implementing that GASB, you really already have all that going on in your general ledger. Some organizations don't have that, and it's going to be a big undertaking to be, to have to compile that information for inclusion in the financial statements. Page 18, you have the, just the income statement side of the pension and OPEB trust funds and the private purpose trust funds. And then starting on page 19 are the notes to the financial statements. And it seems that about half of the footnote disclosure now relates to pension and OPEB with about 15 pages of disclosures. And that mostly comes directly from the actuaries' report on the OPEB side and information from your pension system. And as I mentioned earlier, the last couple of pages of the report are what they call required supplementary information. So that gives you kind of a trend analysis, in some cases, on the pension and the OPEB liability. GASB has been hard at work adding lots of information to financials. Any questions on that? Yep?
I'm chairman of the finance subcommittee. You've stressed that it was a clean audit.
Yep.
I saw some minor discrepancies listed out later in the report, which have been addressed, I assume. I noticed there's no management letter.
Correct.
And several times you have stated in comments here, you know, that no significant finding, no significant finding. Have you found things that were not significant but worth working on?
Yeah. And I think that it's important that you had mentioned that there is no management letter this year. There was last year. If you recall, there were two comments, one related to timely reconciliation of cash and the second one related to compliance with DSC guidelines on the off-years for internal audits of student activity funds. And so cash was reconciled, and we will be doing the audit of student activity funds in January. Under the auditing standards, we are required to report certain things like that to you. And so that really determines what gets put into a management letter. But with respect to addressing your question, there are other recommendations that we make to improve systems and processes and things like that, that we communicate directly to management.
But not necessarily in a management letter, is that what you mean?
Correct. They do not meet the criteria for inclusion, which would be the definition of a significant deficiency or material weakness.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I saw a few questions.
Sure.
What is this disagreements with management? What does that mean? I've never seen that statement here before.
Is that in the governance letter?
It's on page three.
On page three. That is the unbound copy. And this governance letter is required communication. We have to report this to you. So if there were management letter comments, they could be included in this document themselves, or they would be a reference to a separate management letter in there. On page three, disagreements with management. This is just a statement that is, according to the auditing standards, required to be reported. Most of the time when we do audits, we do not have disagreements that get reported. Once in a while, we do.
But no problem for this audit.
No problem for this audit. And just talking about the governance letter, it does talk about our responsibility, our compliance with the ethics requirements, significant accounting policies, if there was any fraud or difficulties that were encountered during the audit, all of that, there would be inclusion, it would be included in this report, or there would be reference to a separate report.
Okay, two other questions. The first one is, is there anything that I, as a school committee member, should be concerned with about the information? Is anything that came out in this information that we should be concerned with that may not be immediately obvious from a person who is not an expert in the GASB rules, listening to your presentation? Is there any concern in this?
In my opinion, no. I mean, I've highlighted specific things that you should be aware of, that things that are important to those charged with governance are a clean audit opinion, fund balance, which means that your financial statements are reported in accordance with GAAP. Your fund balance is a key driver. Your budget versus actual had positive results, and there's no management letter. So those are really the key things that a board or a school committee should be looking for.
Right. And my final question would be, was there any issues or how was the experience of working with the administration in terms of creating your report this year?
It went very smoothly.
Very smoothly. And smoothly is a good thing, right?
Very good. You're one of the first school districts. GASB 75's been a bit of a challenge. It's been holding up some audit reports, so.
We're ahead of the game on that.
You are ahead.
Very, very good. Very pleased. Thank you.
Sue and Alice?
You mentioned something about 92% of our retiree liability is funded.
Yes.
Could you just say a little bit more about how that's figured?
Sure. Actually, if you have those, that bound copy's still available. If you look on page, towards the back of the report, on page 50, this is the required supplementary information for the retirement system. And it's very complicated, so I'm not going to get into the details on how it's calculated. But in a nutshell, you look in that 2018 column, the top of the page is the liability itself. So the liability out there is $15,529. What you have in the bank, I'm using that kind of a loose term, is down below, the planned fiduciary net position, $14,328. Difference between the liability and what you have is the $1,201. So it's 92% funded.
So this is looking at what we know today with staff on board today, what we can accurately predict will be owed to retirees versus what we actually have funded?
Yeah, you have, they have the $14 million in the retirement system.
Alice, then you, Alice?
Yep.
Sue, did you get your?
I'm, I think so.
And with respect to accurately, there's a lot of assumptions that go into calculating the net pension liability and the net OPEB obligation. So we're talking about rates of return, mortality rates, that sort of thing. It's a very complicated process.
That, I believe. I was just trying to get sort of a big picture of what we actually have in the fund right now. If we didn't add to it?
Yep.
We could cover 92% of liabilities going forward.
At that point in time, right. And it's a moving.
For pension.
Yeah, pension. Yep.
Okay.
Alice?
Thank you.
On page 22, where it says compensated absences.
Yes.
Is this a liability that is funded or unfunded?
It is an unfunded liability. It represents if people walked out the door on July 1, what would they need to be paid?
So it doesn't, it doesn't get incorporated into any of these other things?
Right. It is, it's a different GASB. It goes back to '34, about 15 or 20 years ago, that required that inclusion on the government-wide financial statements.
So does it appear anywhere in the statement?
It does. If you go to the government-wide, and that's on page 10, it's one, compensated absences is one of those long-term liabilities. So it's not a current liability, it's a long-term liability.
Okay.
And if you, it's $221,485.
Okay, thank you.
First, just to follow up on Sue's question, I just want to comment. I mean, the, it's, I mean, Sue was asking where we are right now, and really, these are statements as of June 30th, 2018.
Correct.
And when you said, "The money's in the bank," it's not really in the bank. It is in the stock market and other kinds of investments.
Right, yeah. And that's why I said it was kind of a loosely loose term.
So what it was worth on June 30th is probably greater than what it's worth now.
Yeah, depending on the market fluctuation, it's correct.
On page 25?
Yep.
There are two columns. There, it's minimum contribution and total assessment, and those are the same numbers. And when I think of minimum contribution, I think in terms of sort of Chapter 70 foundation on minimum. Is that your interpretation here?
Yes.
Then shouldn't the two numbers be different?
Typically, you know, if you had a minimum contribution, you may have the debt assessment, and you could have other assessments in there.
And these are identical numbers in both columns for every town.
Right.
Which doesn't strike me as right, if minimum is conceptually different from total.
It could be, you know, when I was reviewing this, I kind of thought the same thing, because I'm used to seeing more than one column there.
Okay.
But certainly, you know, going forward, if you wanted to just show the total, that would make sense.
On page 39, these figures are in thousands of dollars, right? And maybe it would have been good to have. And maybe it would have been good to have either, oh, does it say thousands? Where?
39.
Or maybe, maybe on the draft, maybe, maybe it's been.
In the top first paragraph.
Okay.
It says in thousands.
Okay, okay. I mean, I mean, just everyone, everywhere else in the document, you, that you don't, okay, whatever. On page 45, this is the OPEB. The, the table there, was that something that was provided by management or was that something that you did?
That is from your actuary. They calculated this information.
All right. And, and the actuary, I mean, wasn't the last OPEB study done, I mean, isn't it done once every two, two years or is that pension I'm thinking of?
They both are every couple of years. The actuarial valuation for the OPEB liability was as of June, July 1, 2016.
Okay, so here we have going from 20, from June 2017 to June 2018. So there was no valuation going on and yet there's a change of assumption in the discount rate from 3.58% to 3.87%. Was that a management change or was that your change or?
That's from the actuary.
Okay. And was there a justification?
I believe it's a 20-year bond rate.
Okay, great. And just sort of note for my colleagues on the committee that that, you know, that when you take a look at this table, you see the, the change in the OPEB liability between 2017 and 2018 as going up by roughly about $400,000 or $384,000. But if you take out that change in the assumption, that's just the model, you know, that, that backs it back up to 1.4 million. And I just think from our management point of view, that's a much better sense about how much the OPEB liability is growing every year from our, from our point of view. I mean, it went up 1.4 million, but we were able to knock $1 million off of the liability because we changed, changed the discount rate by, by 23%.
And there are a lot of.
Is that a correct?
Lot of moving parts on this, right? And OPEB, you know, I think the point of Gatsby requiring the full liability on the books on the government-wide is to really get people to notice that it's a big number out there.
And, and we had a conversation this, this spring about it. We can have a conversation at a different time, but I just want to, you know, if you think that, well, well, it's not a big deal, it just went up by $300,000, it's really, it's really a larger number in my point of view. Then on page 46, I don't, I don't understand this. What's, I mean, what am I looking at here? And if, and if it's not important, that's okay, we can move on. I try to.
This is part of the actuaries' calculation and how they estimate that it's going to amortize out over the next few years.
And then finally, I forget the page number, but there was some table with the pension and there was some, oh, there, there was, it needed a number of the total people covered somewhere and that wasn't, that wasn't unprovided. Do you, do you have a?
Oh, on the draft report?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
So, so does it change? Can you?
Yeah, that would have been.
I lost my place.
Probably on one of the required supplementary information pages. So I'm guessing it was probably on 48 with mass teachers or some retirement system.
Something like, like that, so.
Guessing it's the $9,157,556.
Oh, here it is. Yeah, page 51, and now I see that the number is there. Great. Because I was just, because I was just looking at the draft. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Just getting feedback on these things tonight. It's interesting to me that the, oh, total OPEB liability is so much higher than the straight pension liability.
Yep.
And I know there's a lot of actuarial stuff going on there, but I guess that means that life is really more expensive than a pension will cover.
You know, the OPEB can vary greatly from one entity to another. It's what you, you providing to your current employees, what you're promising to your future retirees. There's a lot involved and they can really fluctuate. Some entities, they aren't providing as much and the liability's much smaller. Yeah, thank you.
All right. I mean, the other comment on that is that, I mean, there is a stronger mandate for us to fund pension. I mean, I mean, that if we've got money, that we have to put it into pension first. And so we haven't found money.
I'm looking at the total liability, not what we have in the fund.
Because, I mean, I mean, the other thing is that teachers are covered through the mass teachers and, and so our pension's just for the non-instructions, whereas, whereas that's covering everyone.
Any other questions or comments? Anything else? Cheryl?
No, just thank you very much. Appreciate how smoothly everything went.
Kevin, anything you want to add?
Thanks, Dave. And we, I think that based on Cheryl's comments, we did have a very smooth audit this past year. We've been able to develop a process where the firm will come in, in the spring before we close out the end of the year, do a lot of field work and get, you know, sort of set us up so that we're prepared to begin the audit as soon as, right around the, the middle of September. So I think it went very smoothly and I'd like to thank my staff, Michelle Shepard, the assistant business manager, sitting right behind me, of course, as, as well as Lynn Belmer, the payroll and human resources coordinator, and the accounting specialist, Sonia Vitrano, for putting in an awful lot of work. You know, having a, a report without a management letter, I think, is, is reflected on how the office operates. And I think Kevin was pretty conscious about trying to make sure that we do things the appropriate way. So I just want to recognize the staff for that and again, thank Melant and Heath for their, for their work this year.
And thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And thank you, Kevin. And Michelle.
What a difference from two years.
Oh, yeah. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report. Ed will report on goal number one, goals one, two, three, three and four. And goal number five, we'll take that up in executive session, even though it's not listed under item 10, which has, which consists of two other executive session items. So he'll report on, in open session on one through four and then goal number five, we'll take up under item, under item 10 on the agenda. Ed?
Thank you, Dave. I've taken the liberty of putting the goals on the agenda, which I'll do every month, just to keep them in front of you and keep us mindful of what the superintendents are being held accountable for. Goal number two, in regards to legislation, I've had several meetings with the senior associate commissioner of career in college readiness, Cliff Chang. On December 4, he came to Minuteman and spent about an hour and a half here. We discussed financing for, financing, I would just say innovative financing for after-school vocational education program, programs. That was something he wanted to get my ideas about. And then the, the other half of the time, we spent talking about CMR 603, 4.03, which is the regulation that restricts students in the ninth grade, even if they're on a waiting list in another vocational school, from applying to a vocational school that may have room in their school. And this is not just a Minuteman issue. There are several other schools that are experiencing the same because they're adjacent to schools that have waiting lists and those students who have met the criteria are still unable to attend those schools. In our case, we, it's been reported to us that there's a several hundred students on a waiting list at Northeast Met. And we know there were at least 30 students from Woburn who were put on a waiting list that many of them, I think about half of them, applied to Minuteman. We were unable to accept them because the superintendent denied the non-resident chapter 74 approval. The parents appealed. The commissioner upheld the denial. And this is being replicated in a number of places around the Commonwealth, including in Western Mass, in North Hampton with Smith-Vogue to a great degree. It's also happening at Tri-County in Franklin, Mass. To a little lesser extent, at Neshoba Valley Regional Tech. So he was very interested in hearing about this because one of the things that the state as a whole is trying to deal with is access. And so he, we've exchanged some emails back and forth. I've sent him some more materials. I'm going to see the commissioner this Thursday. I don't know if we'll have an opportunity to talk about it. But I got the strong sense that there was some will on behalf of the Department of Ed to look at these restrictions in, in regards to students who are put on waiting lists if they're adjacent to schools that have capacity. So I'll, I'll continue to keep you up to date on that.
Can I just add something to that? If you haven't had a chance to go online and look at 603 CMR 4.03, there's, take a look at it, there's a lot of information. It's called program approval criteria, is the title of that section. And a lot of it applies to what we're doing, trying to do with, with, with the school right now. It's, it's good reading and informative and you say, ah, yeah, that's where, that's where that is coming from as we're doing our work. So I recommend you take a look at that 4.03 titled, it's a subheading of 4.00, or 40, yeah, 4.00 program. It's called program approval criteria, all kinds of things there that apply to us. Jim, obviously.
Yeah, I've got some comments on it. I mean, I've got, I've got some concerns about this and I, and I have a, and I think there's some more information about this. Kids from other regional school districts who don't, I mean, kids, kids from towns who go, who belong to other regional school districts do and can come here, that they just need the superintendent in their town to sign off on it. So this is, this is not a blanket prohibition that is there, but it really is a, a question about whether the local superintendent, under the direction of the local school committee, wants, wants to, wants to send those kids out, out of, out of, out of a district. I mean, I, I am sympathetic with the idea of the waitlist and looking at it, but, you know, when you take a look back at the, at the massive rewrite of the Voca rules in 2014, 2015, you know, superintendents were going back and forth about saying, look, look, don't, don't try to take away our, our, our control and authority over, over our local kids. So it's, it is, it is a more complicated thing and I'm, and I'm, and I don't share the superintendent's view that this is the most important thing that he could be doing with, with respect to, to goal, goal two, which also includes the financial health of, financial health of the district. So I just want to sort of state that in case this comes up. I mean, I just want to share, share my view, if you want that.
If I could respond to that? Or, go ahead, Jeff.
As a high school teacher, who has seen on many occasions the impact of a child being in the wrong program, to me, that takes priority over the politics within a community, is I see the result of students being at the wrong place and how they will often crash and burn for whatever reason it is that they were not allowed to go to another program. I'm talking about a school that has a, you know, Newton has two high schools, one with a career tech program embedded in it and one without. And even there, when you have one in it, there's a reluctance sometimes, this is now a different issue, but still a reluctance of parents to take a kid from one school to the other one. And so they may stay here and crash and burn where the other one, they would be a superstar. Now, there are all sorts of reasons why a superintendent may not want to allow a student to cross the district. Could be a political reason. It could be a not invented here reason, probably a money reason. So I understand the, the position that the superintendent is in, but I'm still going to take the viewpoint of the, the kid and the long-term impact on the student in terms of not being able to go to another program. And if our laws are supposed to create the opportunity for children who needed to attend vocational programs, at least on paper we do that, the reality is, is a lot, a lot of kids are not able to fulfill the meaning of that law. The meaning of the law is to allow kids to attend vocational programs. We put barriers up that make it impossible by not having the capacity at a school and then saying, okay, just because we don't have the capacity, that's the reason that we're going to take that right away from you. So I have a lot of problems with that. I'm not, I am sympathetic to the position of the superintendent, but I haven't seen a lot of superintendents say, forget my local politics, we're going to do the right thing for the kid. I don't see that happen a lot.
Did you want to respond or do you? Go to Carrie.
This is getting very close to the discussion I was hoping to have on the finance committee agenda item. So if we could let Ed continue his report and we'll come back to it.
I was just going to let a couple more people speak and then we're going to move on. Pam?
This also, you know, touches on what we want to be talking about at our special meeting next week on enrollment. And even though the bulk will be, will be spent on in-district enrollment, I wanted to ask whether it would be possible for the administration to prepare a summary of barriers to out-of-district enrollment? Because I know this is one issue, we've talked about other issues in the past, and would it be possible to have that prepared for us by our special meeting next week?
Okay, Alice. Last comment, then we'll move on.
Okay, I just wanted to say that, you know, I see there's a sort of a seat change at the department where they are actually interested in access, that word's been coming up. So they're interested in, in trying to make more seats available. And that's not the kind of atmosphere that was present when they had their big powwow with the 10 superintendent thing. That was a different time and things have changed dramatically in the way that they're thinking about the opportunities that kids should have. And the law, the chapter 74 law actually is designed to give kids access. And it's only in the regulatory side of the, the promulgated regulations that they restrict the access currently.
Okay, thank you. Ed, we'll move on to your next goal.
On page 69, you have the wicked local article about Watertown postponing the decision to join the district until, I think it was 2000, the school year 1920.
2019.
2019 to 2020. I live in the past, yes. But I did want to let you know that we have confirmed that we have received all the eighth grade middle school contact information and we will be presenting to the Watertown Middle School next Tuesday on the 18th. And this is the first time we've been allowed into the Watertown Middle School in five or six years, I believe, Jack, right? So on one hand, the, the school committee, Watertown School Committee as a whole is postponing the decision, but at the same time, the superintendent is giving us gold star access like we have in our own member districts. So we're appreciative of that and we think we're going to, you know, we had 14 kids from the Watertown come to the open house with absolutely no advertising, no access, whatever. So we'll see what happens after that. I did want to let the school committee know that I've also, I don't know, it seems to happen this time every year, the city of Cambridge is asking, asking about access to Minuteman again. Apparently last February, they had a, I guess we would call it a vote, it was a formal vote on a, not a policy, but a position, I guess, that the school committee insisted that the Cambridge superintendent take. insisted that the Cambridge superintendent take, which was to provide more access to high-quality vocational education. So I think this is an outcome of some of those discussions in Cambridge and I'm working with one of the school committee members there to get him information around access to Minuteman. The other town that has been having discussions about, that came up, well, we didn't know we were not in Minuteman, was in the town of Lincoln.
That was after they cashed the check?
Yeah, after they cashed the $1 million fee. So I've been, I'm responding to a couple of requests from people that are on this Lincoln List Served, you know, which I put myself on regrettably because there's 50 things an hour that come through, you know, asking where I can get my cat neutered and trying to sell me old cars. So I'm trying to get off of that and I can't. But there's, so it was couched to me is there's a discussion in Lincoln about why we left and why we need to be back in the district. So that's that. In regards to Goal Four, yes?
On Goal Three, just three quick comments. First, the access thing is great, you know, I mean, and I'm happy to give you credit on, you know, on Goal Two because I think that's a key thing there. I think it's, I think, you know, we have only eight freshmen from Watertown, which is down from previous years. And so I think getting access is a key. Second, and then the goal that talks about all of the appropriate information and I'm just asking, would you be able to give us copies of all of the information that you provided to Watertown going back to the fall of 2017 when I know you had the first thing? I'm just curious what the presentation was.
I thought we already gave that to the school committee, didn't we? Yeah, I think we've given it several times. We'll check.
Okay. And then third, I mean Belmont is the one district town that neighbors, that borders on Watertown and, you know, there's a lot of back and forth there. I've held off talking with people there while this process was going on, but now that it's on hold or put off, I'm looking forward to sort of getting some color from people in town about their view on Minuteman. And I guess I'm just asking.
The people of Watertown?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, personal friends and contacts. I was a member of a church there for, you know, for 10 years and I didn't want to, I didn't want to do that while we were sort of in the middle of negotiations, but I think it's a good time just for me to get some sense as to how Watertown is viewing this.
Jennifer?
So access to the middle school is huge, but we've already had the showcase day. We've already had the eighth grade students come in from the district town. Are there going to be similar events to help the Watertown kids come and tour the school and be, because Shadow Day is this week and?
We have another Shadow Day in January.
Okay.
And we, as we've done in the past with other towns, we do try to make an accommodation once there's a critical mass of kids. I think we, isn't there a conversation about Wayland and? Yeah.
Oh, okay. So they're coming in just separately as?
Yeah.
I think access to the school, especially with the new building coming up, really helps people.
Jeff?
Yeah, how many kids from Wayland are coming to look at it? Do we know?
I don't think it's more than 10 or 12.
Still 10 or 12, yeah. It's a very strange world.
It is, I must admit.
So Ford, Open House on page 72, there's sort of narrative of Open House and some of you were there. It was very successful. Over 650 people showed up, over 215 kids stopped and registered, over 160 families, parents took a very guided tour of the new facility. We're going to talk, we have some more detailed feedback on that day itself, but just briefly, from RJ Gray, there were 46 students at Showcase Day. I think we went over that in terms of?
RJ Gray's which town?
Acton.
Acton.
Oh, Open House, there were 20 from Acton, 50 from Arlington. This is after the Showcase Day. They showed up with their parents on Open House on December 2nd. These were students that registered. 20 from Belmont, six from Bolton, 10 from Concord, Dover, Lancaster, six, Lexington, 23, Needham, 14, Stowe, 17. So this is, you remember last year when George sort of said, if they come to three events, they have like an 85% chance of actually enrolling. So that was 169 that actually enrolled when they got to the Open House.
So Ed, do we have any idea, is, in Lancaster, the eighth grade class is about 30 kids less than average. It's only 52 kids and usually it's about 85. Is that just Lancaster? I'm curious, sometimes it goes, the number of, yeah, the number of, it goes way back up in the next class off.
I don't know off the top of my head. I think some towns have been going down in the western part.
Okay.
At the same time, towns in Arlington, Lexington, Belmont have been increasing quite a bit.
Concord?
Concord.
Enrollment here and?
No, just pure the number of kids.
You're talking about in the schools, their own schools.
But it's funny because the seventh grade class is back up to 80. It's just, it's a funny little blip in the demographics and they have, there's no kids in that class. I was amazed. They only have like?
Anything else on that?
What the mood was.
I don't want to anger, though. What else were you thinking about?
Okay, folks, let's, this is a serious talk here.
In terms of the declarant towns, there were 17 kids from the declarant towns that were at Open House, 14 from Watertown, and then 17 other out-of-district kids. I think we turned the volume up on this tonight, didn't we? And we'll have more data on what they're interested in, what they saw, but Ford helped give some tours, so he might have a comment.
Yeah, Jack and I and a few others gave some tours, mainly the people from Skanska and Gilbane, which they were terrific. To the new school, what impressed me is I had an opportunity to talk to a lot of parents or a number of parents and the enthusiasm for Minuteman and the enthusiasm for the school transferred to the student who was there also. It was just tremendous enthusiasm. And we gave five, was it five series of tours? Five each, but one again once. Yeah, so there were 10, 11 tours in total over the course of the time and the parents really were engaged. And if I have any hope, I think there's a lot of hope. I did have the opportunity to talk to some people from Wayland, some people from Belmont. And it was fascinating as I talked to them, they didn't quite understand why they were in the position they were. I mean, it was just amazing to me that they had no idea what was going on in their town when the decisions were made. So I think that was worthwhile. My recommendation, I mean, we can talk about this next week, but, and I think there was some talk about it. I feel very strongly that we should offer the opportunity over the next month for parents to come in and see the school, I mean, build a group and do it again on another Saturday or Sunday and?
Ford, you mean the new building?
The new building. I think that would be imperative that we do that and we try to advertise it and limit it to a certain number, but I would do that through the course of the year, through the admissions process if we could. I can't say enough for Gilbane and Skanska in particular and Castle Blues was also there. They had representatives there. They were all there and they were very engaged in the touring process. So they're very proud of their school that they're showing and now I think the time is ripe to do that.
I wrote that down. Alice?
What is the maximum number of kids you plan to accept into the freshman class?
Well, we, depending on staffing, around 180 to 185.
And what yield do you think you would get on that?
Well, you know, just go by histor, I would expect it would be higher, but historically, when we get to that point in time, I would expect 170 to 175 actually show up.
Okay, good, thank you. And thank you Ford and Jack and of course Gilbane and Castle Blues and Skanska staff for being there. I think your idea of offering more tours, if you wish, to the new school is a good one. We'll consider that. Thank you.
Yeah, we've already been advertising it.
Oh, all right.
We went to the Arlington Special Town Meeting and our kids were there selling, I don't know, cookies or something. And we also had a sign for signups for a tour in the spring, I think. We were, I don't remember, we didn't give a specific date, but we said it would be in the spring.
Spring would be a little more appropriate. Whatever works.
Ford, were you also suggesting doing that in the non-member towns or just the member towns?
Say that again?
Were you suggesting advertising it?
Anybody who wants to send their child to Minuteman, their parents should have the opportunity.
So member and non-member?
The discussion we had earlier, it's absolute discrimination. When you discriminate against kids who want to come to the school like that, it's just, it's wrong.
So on page 73, you'll see this over town of member town access expectations. And this grew out of a discussion previously. I would suggest that you read this. It's sort of written in a voice that Jeff Stulven would be proud of, but he doesn't think it goes far enough. Oh, you made me snort.
I just wanted to add one.
We could vote on it on the 18th if we want to edit it a little bit.
I just wanted to add one thing. This is also, some of this is covered in 603 4.03. In fact, requiring, I had written a note to myself, what does the law require sending towns to do? And then I went back and read, I read 4.03.
Yes.
And this is one of them, but also it does say that parents can opt out if they choose to.
Yes.
If they don't want to have, if parents don't want to have their information sent to Minuteman, they can do that. I don't know if that needs to go in there or not, but it was a very, very positive upbeat, I thought, and impressive list and critical with that.
And Jack and George kind of developed it and I edited it a little bit.
Yeah, yes, now your turn, Jack.
Right. So I assume that this is what the administration would think would be the gold standard for access.
Yes.
Okay, so now as far as Stulvenization of this, so this is bureaucratic language, which I don't talk in, it would be more like shame on you for not doing these things, sort of things. But the only thing that I, problem I had with this is that it sounded like it was a state law that you're putting in here instead of the tone that we think that this is what is necessary to give your kids a fair opportunity to attend Minuteman. I would reexamine the language you use, if not the items, a little bit.
You mean it's too tough?
No, not, no, no, I think it can be tough, but it sounds like you're trying to pretend that it's the state law.
Oh, I am.
Yeah, but a lot of it isn't.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if maybe the tone should change a little bit, but is this the content that you guys believe is the gold star that I'm happy?
No, whatever adjustments we want to make is fine.
Yeah.
Maybe you send them to Julia and we can have it edited for the 18th and, because you wanted to vote on something so you could?
I want to vote on something to say that the school committee believes that this is what all towns should be so we can then start talking about them. But I want the language to be such that it doesn't sound like we were bullying them when we can't. I mean, we don't have, we have a moral right.
The preamble, it should talk more about?
Yeah, and some of the thus's and you shall or it sounds like there's a legal thing against it, which there isn't. So I would change the, she likes the legalese language, that's okay.
You know, I'll send my comments, but it's actually, they're actually required to provide the mailing addresses. So this is just a restatement of requirement, but by stating it as Minuteman shall receive, that puts a requirement on us that we'll receive them and you can't force somebody to receive something. So we might want to reword that to be, you know, they'll send them or something by a certain day or. But I think that the general way of trying to make it more friendly would be just to say, you know, that these dates are provided to make it easier to comply with the state law and regulations.
Not all of this is state law. So some parts of this aren't state law, this goes beyond state law, so I think we should state that this is what is necessary in our view for a fair chance for someone over language and use for the students to come. The reason we're doing this, some of it is state law and some of it is this is what's fair. We should all be on the same page.
Well, let's do this. People who have suggestions for different language or tone or whatever, if you would send them to Julia, by when, Julie? When would you need them, would you like to have them? Well, if they're going to have them, yeah, by?
Well, by this Thursday.
That's pretty short.
Because we're having a meeting on the 18th.
I know, I know.
We can make adjustments at that meeting, but if you want to vote on it, they need to be kind of minor adjustments on the 18th.
So we'll say, if you can, get your suggestions to Julia by the 13th, the end of the 13th.
So my other stuff will be in executive session, so that?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, well, now we're going to back up to a report from the Enrollment Task Force, a brief one about what's going to be happening.
Briefly, I think Jim and I are sharing a mic. So?
Let's move them all down.
We can share, it was working. So next Tuesday is our special meeting on enrollment. The few things that the Enrollment Task Force had talked about ensuring that, or would like us to address this issue that we were just talking about is one of the major things that we want to make sure we're walking away from that meeting with something that we all can go back to our communities and say, this is, and understand, this is the minimum expectation in terms of access. Another piece that we want to be reviewing at that meeting is a discussion of parent talking points and again, having some, you know, talking points that we all can be sharing with our districts and that are really designed for talking with parents. Jack was going to give an update on a focus group that he's doing with some of his freshmen on why they came to Minuteman, if that can happen before the meeting. It'll be an opportunity to talk about the parent liaisons, which are very excited, are on board and what their role is going to be. I'm not sure we're going to have a chance to meet some of them at that, but you know?
They may be available.
So in short, it's giving an overview and an update on all the different pieces that the Enrollment Task Force has been working on. Much of this has been focused on our in-district enrollment. We also want to take time that's needed to talk about the non-member enrollment issues that the Finance Committee has been addressing and we'll talk about tonight. And if we need time at the 18th, we'll carve out some time there as well.
Okay. Ford and then Carrie?
Carrie, go.
Oh, Carrie, Ford?
Just to point out, I just checked it, the meeting, the school committee meeting on the 18th is not on the website calendar of meetings for the school. It is there, but the 18th is not.
So that'll be posted shortly. So, yeah, okay, we need to get it.
It's my understanding it's your agenda, Mr. Ford. The date isn't even there.
Posted on the website.
I just looked at the print, it was mailed.
Yeah. Anyway, they will check, but thank you, Carrie. And then Pam and I will talk about working, we'll work up an agenda. If anybody has a particular agenda item, you can tell Pam or you can tell me and we'll put together an agenda for that evening, which will also include a discussion of 10B. Ford?
Because we're coming into the budget session, I'd like us to talk about how the school can do a better job in promoting Minuteman to the outside. the school can do a better job in promoting Minuteman to the outside community, not just our members, but outside our members. And that perhaps means the hiring of a, of a company that would come in and help us promote career and technical education and Minuteman. And that would, what I'm thinking about when I do that, I'm thinking about radio, television, Boston Globe type of promotion, anything that we can do to change the perception that this is just a wonderful type of education that we should give the kids, but not for my kids. And that there is a value in this kind of an education. It's talked about from the federal government on down, but I see very little action. And I really think we need to think about having a very serious promotional program, such as one that you see in private education. I think we got to look at the private schools and how they go out and sell to their communities. We should be doing the same. And I think that is a very serious budget consideration that should be discussed. If we put it off, we're putting it off for a whole nother year. So, I think we need to look at it now. And I think it's a great investment for our communities.
We'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Yeah. Dave, can I--
I'm sorry.
Ford, actually, I skipped over that topic in our, my minutes from our last enrollment task force where we talked about the different items for it. One of them is to be, you know, to be discussing or reviewing a scope of work on branding, which I think would cover some of the things that you're talking about, you know.
That'll be on the agenda. In fact, we talked about it briefly, it seemed to be at the officers' meeting. I remember bringing it up, that I'd heard that had been mentioned, but this will get it on the agenda. Jim? We don't want to get into discussions--
Yeah, yeah. Just to follow up to Ford, to ask more precisely what he had in mind. I mean, are you talking about like a $25,000 thing or a $150,000 thing? I mean, just--
I really have no idea. I think you have to go out to some firms and talk to them. I probably think it's north of 25 and probably closer to 50 to 75 thousand.
I think we should wait until next week to get into that kind of detail. But if you have some thoughts about it, say them, if you would, bring them, and anyone else to that matter too. But that's a little substantive and I think we ought to go on to that. So, if you have an agenda item for that, which will include what Pam has just talked about and also, as I say, we'll talk about section 10B of the, of the regional agreement regarding tuition, et cetera, and all kinds of things. So, let us know. Okay? All right. Moving on to the school building committee report. Ford?
Very simply, we're on budget, on time. The weather has been challenging, Jeff, but they do an amazing job managing it. Sometimes when a group of trades don't show up, they show up the next day because they put pressure on them to be out there. So, Skanska and Gilbane are working very diligently to make sure that we have people out there doing the job. I think the building, I haven't been out there in seven or eight days, but I believe the building is 99% tight, which is good. And as you go to the, if you have the opportunity and want to go see the building, they're starting to put up wall boards in classrooms. They're developing and it's starting to look like it's going to be a school in another week. So, that's an exaggeration.
Is it heated at this point or the propane, is it being heated?
Well, they're heating the building for the workers.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
That's still a work in progress. They will make a decision, I think it's in February, as to what will be the power when we open up the building. They're in discussions to the extent they can with National Grid, but you can follow the newspaper to see how they're progressing.
Wow. Were you going to talk about possible adjustment to the calendar?
The superintendent handles the calendar, I know.
It was under your category.
So, we'll be proposing a calendar to the school committee for approval. That's different in past years where we've started before Labor Day. Jack and his management team has given me a calendar. We have some little things to adjust in it. He spoke to the Minuteman Faculty Association representatives about it briefly, about starting after Labor Day, which would give construction a little bit more time in the summer. So, we may put this in the packet for the 18th because it's not a big deal.
Would that include new teachers, everybody?
No, students would start after Labor Day.
Okay, students after Labor Day.
Yeah. Yeah, the way the calendar falls this year, it'll, it's very early anyway. So, it's kind of working in our favor. We would still end by June 16th and students, and then we'd have time, if you can imagine, every kid that comes into this new building is going to need to be orientated, oriented. So, Jack and I have been talking about things we could do with just the ninth grade and juniors, just the 10th grade and soft seniors, like, you know, what do you call it? A hunt, scavenger hunt in the building so they get to learn the building, do some fun things together, just to acclimate. And take a few days to do that and enjoy the building and have some fun in it.
You know, you can add this to their educational experience by, by expanding your search to find punchless items. So, they get a little punchless items for the building. So, they walk around trying to find things that are wrong. And anybody who finds one that gets on the punch list gets a little prize. Lollipoppers.
We'll take that into consideration.
You're on the committee, Jeff. Thank you.
That's it.
That will be presented to us in a--
I would like to have you approve it on the 18th. Then we could get it out there because it is a big shift in the, what we, way we've done it for 10 years. And people who go away, blah, blah, blah.
Okay. Any question about the calendar coming? All right. Kevin, budget update?
Thank you very much, Dave. At your, at the table this evening, the two-page report that was reviewed with the finance subcommittee last Thursday. It's the, the cover sheet is the FY '20 estimated revenue plan, version two. And attached to that is the, the assessment page that lays out the formula of the assessments. You may recall, we did, our original version was based on our current staffing and level funding when we started the budget process, reflected an increase of about 4.65% on an operational basis, not talking about the debt service. And it was, at that point, we shared those numbers with our town managers and administrators for budget planning purposes. The administration has since reviewed all of the requests and has made a number of, a number of budget adjustments primarily geared towards transitioning and accommodating the needs that we, that we expect going into the new building. We cut an additional $230,000 from the original version one. And what we're looking at now is a, is a, is a budget of $19,667,796, exclusive again of debt service, reflecting a 3.42%. If you factor in the debt service of about $3.1 million, we're looking at an increase of 7.6% overall. It's important to note that where we finished last year was with an increase of 3.78%. So, where we sit today is lower at, with the 3.42% is less than where we finished last year. And on the overall budget, we were up 11.4% primarily due to the, starting the debt service to kick in. So, some of the things that we talked about with the, at the finance subcommittee meeting was basically, again, focused on what we anticipate with, with going into the new building. I'll just give a, sort of a high-level overview. It is a bit of a work in process. But, you know, we're, we're looking at maybe bringing on a 0.5 FTE logistics engineer to support all the activity and the efforts that we're going to need to do to implement the warehouse and sort of the inventory management of the new building. Also looking to bring on a facilities director, which would be sort of a, an individual that would not only be able to manage the, the new building, but also the potential expansion on the campus development and the athletic facilities. The plan there is to fund 50% from the district and 50% from the facilities rental account. We think that's, that's very sustainable. And of course, adding multimedia engineering instructor, we may have to do that on a 0.5 basis as we, as we transition into the new building. So, but you know, and we do have a couple of retirements that we don't anticipate filling. And, you know, some of the other things that are reflected in the budget are estimated utility costs, which were provided by the, by the engineers. And that, that doesn't include any, any, any reflection on if we're able to move forward with the photovoltaic canopy system that we're hopeful that we'll be able to do. We've been looking at that, but have not factored that into some of the utility costs. We generate additional costs. Obviously, we were able to do that. And, you know, incorporating some things, other needs like athletic field maintenance, trying to take a look at how we do our cleaning services, maybe take a look at that a little differently. Some of the things that we're more optimistic about going into the building than we perhaps were a few years ago, in terms of funding, is the technology capability. We've been able to expand within the project budget, a lot of the, the technology infrastructure that will be in there. And it's, we've been holding off on a lot of major purchases, given that the technology prices have, have, have gone down over the last six months or so. How that trends going forward, we'll see. But we are starting to lock in some of that pricing because we're getting to that stage in the, in the project. And given the success we've had over the last number of years with grants and utilization of Perkins, we do have, we feel as though moving into the new building, given the equipment needs we currently have and what's included in the project, that the building will be equipped very, very sufficiently to be able to, to provide the, the educational programs that we'll be offering. I would also point out, and it came up in the audit report, that it was noted in the audit report, as of June 30th of 18, we have $450,000 in the stabilization fund. That doesn't count the $300,000 that's already appropriated in this year. So, we'll have $750,000 to deal with any capital needs that we haven't anticipated, that we think we'll, we'll need to, we'll need to address as well. And we also have some funding in the operating budget that, that will be able to do that as well, given, you know, there might be some unforeseen issues that come up once we move in. So, that's basically where we're at right now. The administration is still working on some minor changes that I, will be bringing forward to the finance subcommittee as we try and finalize a recommendation to the school committee. However, I think the general discussion, and I'll defer to the chair and the other members, was that I think in, in moving into the new building, we want to make sure that we do have adequate funding resources to be able to transition in and not leave ourselves short. So, I think that in terms of the overall budget increase at about 3.4%, we think that that might be the right, sort of the right increase at this point in time in, in, as we're moving into the new, as we're moving into the new building. Again, we'll be tweaking some things, but again, the prior, we don't want to be going into the building without adequate funding to be able to do the things we need to do to get the building up and running. So, those are just some general comments that I wanted to offer to give the committee an update. And I'll defer to the members of the finance subcommittee if they'd like to add anything.
I'm okay. Did you have a question?
What is the choice adjustment?
Those are students that are taking vocational programs outside of, that aren't here, that we get charged, that we get charged for. We have some students that go to Lemonster, take programs. Another student in, at Assavet. So--
That are full-time students?
Yes, yeah.
I thought that the towns paid those directly.
It comes, it comes off of Minuteman's because of chapter 74.
Lancaster had a kid that went to Norfolk Aggie.
Different.
Different.
It's different.
Yeah, schools are different.
That's a different, okay.
We've had to vote at the town meeting on the Assavet kids.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised. Yep.
Carrie, are you going to add something? That'll come to Jim.
I think we've got a finance committee report.
We've got a finance committee report coming up. So, and I think we want to talk more about the tuition question. I think Kevin did talk with us, give him credit for that, about whether we felt he should be more aggressive on the annual increase in the operating budget. We totally agree with the position. Don't, don't get ourselves into a trap next year. Also, communities will be absorbing an ever-increasing for the next couple of years, capital charge. So, they're prepared. I mean, my point is there that they are prepared for a major jump because of what's happening with, with capital. And I think the difference between 3.4 and 3% increase on the operating budget is relatively minimal and invisible at this point in time, especially when balanced against the uncertainties, not just of the building, but what happens with enrollment. And we don't want to be caught with, you know, insufficient funding for staff to serve the kids that show up.
Okay, Jim?
To follow up, I mean, I think, I think there, there's a good case that this has been level funded and then, and then, and then I'll cut on, cut on back, there's some prudent things going on. You know, Kevin is dealing with, this is the last year of the teacher's contract that has a 3% step in it. And so, that, that is bumping it up. The stabilization fund is a good thing to keep in mind, that if we do find new circumstances that we haven't dealt with, we have, we have access there. You know, and it's important, I think, to talk to town meetings about, you know, that we're keeping the lid on costs. At the same time, they will see their assessments go up a lot more than what the, bumping the cost. And part of that is the capital and the other is the fact that the, that the revenue side that can pay for this before it gets to, to the assessments is down more than $400,000. Most of that is lower tuitions that we're, that we're collecting. And so, the notion of how much should we be charging and collecting in terms of tuitions bears directly on what the level of, of assessments is.
Okay, Kevin? Anything else for Kevin about the presentation? All right. Moving on to authorize the disposal of surplus property. It's on page 91 in your packet.
Thank you. You will find the memo. I think you'll find this item to be a, a regular agenda item as we move forward because as we start to identify property, it's part of the move management process that we're actively engaged in. We'd like to seek authorization to declare the item surplus in post-ends and try and sell the property. So, right here we have the, the property, the surplus property in our post-grad automotive program that will not be moved and seeking a vote to, from the committee to declare this property surplus so that we can proceed with selling it.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Just a second.
Select Ford and Jennifer, I guess. Any questions about the motion about the, the list, the surplus autom, automotive equipment? Any question at all? There are eight people in the room right now. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? None? So, it's 8-0-0. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, moving, moving on to subcommittee reports. Sue, on page 93, there's a brief report on page 93 in your packet.
So, you will remember that last spring, the strategic planning task force was working on resources and processes for bringing on school committee members as that, as that evolves, that we have new school committee members coming on. And we completed that and there's a lot of resources available to you. What we're going to be talking about soon and what's in your packet is related to goal two, which is setting the stage for recruiting leadership for the school at some point in the future. We're looking at strategic issues here. We'd like to do our best to take advantage of the experience and knowledge that we have now on the school committee. And to that end, you have a draft document. I don't know what the page numbers are.
93.
Yes, and then it goes on for a bit.
Oh, yeah, that goes on-- Oh, yeah, that goes on from there for like four or five pages.
So what that is, is, um, giving context for, uh, the background and the history of CVTE in Massachusetts, and also history of Minuteman. And I can say that, um, many of us on the task force, certainly me, uh, learned quite a lot about what Minuteman has done. That's very, that's pretty extraordinary, actually, over, uh, the last many years. And it helps to, uh, set a context, set a stage for how we think about leadership going forward. Uh, as I said, this is a draft. Everybody should, uh, review it. Um, you know, we're wide open to questions, concerns, uh, additions, uh, to what we've done here. And it takes a long to, we're going to be taking a long-term view, a five to 10-year view, you know, thinking about leadership going forward. But in the spring, we're going to come back to you for some discussion about action steps we can take in the next couple of years. For example, at some point, thinking about the, um, recruiting, uh, firm that we would need for new leadership, to select new leadership for us. So, any questions?
So you'll, uh, we'll re, we'll revisit this in the spring?
That is correct.
Okay, in the meantime, read it over once or twice, three, five, three times, and put notes on it.
Yes.
Okay.
And one thing we're going to do in the spring is ask each individual school committee member to come up with maybe four of what they believe to be the key criteria that we should be looking for in new leadership, given where Minuteman is going and wants to go.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the authors of, Ed, did you write some of this, of the report?
Matt directed.
Did the staff write?
Alice in the strategic plan. I fed some information.
Okay, that's what I, what I meant.
It's a nice overview.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you all very much. A lot of, a lot of good information there, that we will use. All right. Okay, moving on to, um, the finance committee, uh, report. What I want to mention, be, just before I turn over to Carrie and then Jim, is that we, that there is a, you got considerable material that Jim has put together on, uh, section 10B of the, of the, um, regional agreement. But what I, and what, what, what will happen tonight is that, uh, both Carrie and Jim will explain what we talked about at the finance committee, and also what, what is in the packet, that, that Jim, that was in your packet. In other words, how to go about reading it and learning from it. We're not going to get into a substantive discussion about it tonight. We're, we will do that for the 18. So it's, any questions that you have, I'll pass. Okay. Would be clarifying questions about, is this what you mean here? How, what, how, what, how am I supposed to read this? Just clarifying questions, not a discussion of the, uh, the value of it or, or where it's going. Ultimately, we would, there may be a vote on some recommendations that would come at another time, but we're not going to get into that discussion tonight. It's for you just to prepare you to read the material and to get into it, and then for us to have a, a more thorough discussion at our next meeting. Okay? All right, Carrie, and then, and then Jim.
Okay, so, um, we have heard from, from Jim a couple of times. We've seen some, uh, preliminary written material from him. Um, and I want to, uh, and, and there's more in, in the email that was sent out, was that on Thursday or Friday? Um, must have been Friday, because it was right after our, uh, last finance subcommittee meeting. Um, and I want to acknowledge the enormous amount of work that Jim has put into this, not just of his own volition, but as we have had continuing dialogue at the finance committee and questions have been raised, and, and he has been somewhat flexible, and he's gone back and, and refined the formula that he's talking about, um, and worked harder on, on the, um, context. At the same time, um, the finance subcommittee is talking not simply about the formula, but the formula in context. What, what does it send? How does it fit with other policies and initiatives? Um, how does it sit? What does it mean to ascending member community or non-member community when this is, could be potentially introduced, um, in the same year as the capital fee hitting an out-of-district? What would it mean relative to a superintendent's, um, likelihood, um, their incentive to support or, or deny, um, an application for an out-of-district student to come here? How does it fit into the, the ideal goal of full enrollment in the new building, which ultimately would reduce the cost per student for all involved? Uh, there are, um, uh, there are vocational schools that actually are operating at, at below what this, uh, what the commissioner's, um, set tuition is, especially when you add to that, you know, uh, the additional cost that the sending community for an out-of-district going to another school is carrying. So these are the questions that we've already raised. Um, we will be very interested to have a more in-depth, uh, discussion next week and, and how it fits into the strategic, um, moves, uh, that are the central, um, agenda item next week. But we do want to hear your questions. In other words, what should we be prepared to be thinking about, um, putting their financial, um, financial considerations do not exist in a vacuum. That's what we're, we're the finance subcommittee, but we need to hear your questions and input on how it will work in process, and what signals are we sending relative to our long-term and short-term goals, uh, for, and, and access, which, um, superintendent was talking about earlier. So I think, um, with that, I will let Jim, uh, give a little more summary. If you have specific questions about how to interpret things that were in his material, um, maybe we can take those first. And then, second, um, the more general, uh, broad-based, uh, political or philosophical policy-type questions that we might put on, on our list to talk about next week as well.
But not to get into today.
But not to get into debate tonight.
Right. You really need to hear from Jim and also read the material that, that was presented, that he's prepared.
Yep.
So I thank, I mean, I thank Carrie and, and Dave, as my colleagues on the finance subcommittee, really for being willing to spend hours, hours on, on this, um, going, going back and forth. What you got on Friday were the documents we had taken a look at, at our Thursday meeting, and, and, um, there were 13 pages, um, uh, of which, um, there was a cover memo from me. There were three pages of what I call background and dis- discussion points. There were two pages that were excerpts, quote, uh, quotes from state law, state regulation, um, our regional agreement. There were two spreadsheets that were based on a long-term financial model. There was a page from last year's budget book. Um, there was a, a graph, and there was communication between Kevin and Christine Lynch at Amdesi, and finally, a letter from Deputy Commissioner Jeff Wolfson. And so with all of that, Dave said, you know, Jim, can you, can you help maybe just put a, put a cover on top of that, just to, just to walk through that? And so that's what I, what I did this afternoon, and I passed that, that around. And let me really sort of go, go through, go through that with reference to this 13-page, page of document. So taking a look at the, at the background and dis- discussion points, it's broken up by sections. I've mirrored those sections here. The first section are just really background, um, uh, facts and statements about what has been going on. Um, I think that's relatively straightforward. The second group is, is, um, when you, when you take a look at the financial im- impact, our, you know, our average, um, cost for the in-district towns in fiscal year 19 is about $30,000, and if you compare that to a, a Desi set tuition of around $17,000 plus a $3,000 for sped, that's about a $10,000 gap. If you multiply that by the 100 mil, 100 non-district students, that's where the million-dollar, dollar figure comes, comes from. Um, the, the, the third group is the proposed method for sort of calculating that, because the regional agreement says that this committee has to come up with a, a method for calculating the in-district a- average cost. And we went through three trials and came up with one that is, that we call the direct method. That's really the most simple, because it uses, the budget book pulls out two, you know, two total assessment numbers, adds them up, and then divides them by, you know, by the foundation enrollment. So we think that that's a really clear, simple, um, easy to, to justify. That also has the feature, just let me say, that that includes the cost of providing sped services. So, so if we base tuitions on this notion in section 10, 10B, we would not be differentiating what the, what the non-member tuition is, whether or not the, the student needed sped, sped of services. And, and, and we actually view that as a benefit, because at least I think of that as sort of re- reflecting the educational model we have here. And then, uh, after that, the items 14 through eight, A, 18, I, I, um, apologize, there are two number A18s. This is the first one. And this is really sort of the newer stuff, and it's, and it's the gap between the regulations we know and love that have been around versus, versus what the state law, um, actually says. And if you take a look at, at the actual state law, there's a sentence in section 7C that says, "A regional vocational school will fix the tuition for those non-member students who, who live in towns who don't have their own vocational schools." Um, and that's subject to the approval of the commissioner under the direction of the state board. And, and to my knowledge, Minuteman or any other regional voc tech has never, um, used that portion of the state law, and the current state regulations make, you know, don't have anything that, that references that. Um, and so we asked Kevin to reach out to Desi to see whether it, in fact, a vocational school, school committee does have that authority, and we got the letter back from Jeff, Jeff and Wolfson, which, um, says, yes, that, that is a statutory right. Um, but he also added his, his own personal opinion that he thought, um, it was unlikely that Desi would approve it because it, because it did all the work back in 2014 and 15. Um, but he ended with a note saying, "Any, any request for such a higher rate submitted by Minuteman School Committee would certainly need to, to articulate the unique and extraordinary circumstances that might justify, um, such an, such an assumption or exception." I might have quoted the letter wrong, I'm sorry.
The letter's in the back.
Yeah, uh, spell check.
As, as his email.
Right.
Around the letter.
So, um, uh, and so the, I mean, so that's all for you to take a look at. And the one last thing I sort of say is that when Desi came up with a notion of a capital charge, which was a special case for a Minuteman, they've made a distinction between type A and type, type of B, B towns. Briefly, type A towns are towns that don't belong to a regional school nor have their own chapter 74 programs, and type B is everyone else, those, those that do either have their own exploratory programs or belong to a regional school. And over, over, over the past, you know, 20 years, we've had a lot of students through the system from type A and type, type of B towns. And so on the second page, I have listed all those, all those towns and where, where, where they are. And basically, if you, I mean, the, the capital charge regulation says type B towns should pay less, and I think that's because it's a recognition that they're already investing in, in, in voc ed, whereas type A towns, who, who are not making any in-district investment in chapter 74, are, are going to pay the same that we, that we pay, just in terms of capital costs. And so that's sort of, I think, where our work and can, oh, consensus stopped. Um, I, I've, I've got this graph that I also had, and that sort of shows the change in the compensation, I mean, relative share between member towns, the towns like Belmont and others who are leaving, the type A towns that have no voc programs, and the type B towns. And what's striking there is that you see the, the impact of this access question that Ed, that Ed had talked about. I mean, I, I do get that, and, and I, you know, I apologize if I sounded too negative on it, um, and, uh, but, but you see here, what was going on is that pre, pre-reg type B towns were 30%, and for the past three years, that share has dropped by six or seven percent every year. And we, we are now dealing with, a senior class is the only pre-regulation class we have. So I would, I would think if, if nothing changes, that's going to drop down to like five, 5%. So it's, so the population really is becoming a member town and type A town, with the type B towns, um, a fairly small slice. Um, the rest of the talking points were my proposals, but we aren't going to get in to those now. Um, that's certainly suitable for later. Based on the conversations, I even have, uh, more to say, and I'm going to meet with Pam about possibly writing up something, something for next week's meeting.
Questions about? How to, how to approach reading the material, as I say, not to debate its, the points or anything?
Again, um, believe me, I would love to tell you all where I stand on this, but that's not why we're here tonight. We're here to, what should we be considering? This would be a major, major decision for us to, to go ahead and do.
And the material, the material that you got, um, online today, it's very rich. Jim writes very well, it's very clear, but it's important, at least I found it important to read, really to read every word of it, uh, because you, you need to read it in, in total to, to grasp it and understand it, what, what the, what we've been, the material that we've been working on the finance committee. So, any question about that? Okay, good. You have your homework. We have a lot of homework to do for, some by Thursday, uh, and some for next week. Oh, Julia, uh, how many, before we move on, how many people didn't get the packet in the mail? A lot of people.
We gave us packets.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got ours at our last meeting, so we didn't get it through the mail, but a lot of people, when, when were they mailed out, Julia? Thursday? I guess we have to do it earlier.
It's, go ahead, Jeff.
I, it's, um, I do make comments of these, and it's very hard to do that online. I also like to see the, uh, financial forms. I print out some of the pages. When I don't have get the packet, I choose the pages I want to read carefully, and I print them out on my own. I can't do this with the financial pages, because the print is.
No, we, no question, we need them, so we.
Yeah, so send them second day or next day or whatever. Uh, absorb the cost, but we should be getting the packets.
I assume they're going out first.
As far in advance of the meeting as possible.
Yeah.
A Friday would be best.
I'm assuming they're, we're paying first-class postage for them and all that, yeah. But send them out two or three days early that they're going out, I guess, I would say. Because it, it's, it's critical for everyone to have a, a hard copy. Pardon me?
Yeah, we'll send them overnight. We'll just do that.
Okay, good. Thank you. I know everyone's been trying and, and to get them out, and I appreciate hearing, glad you're telling us you're not getting them. No, I'm not glad you're not getting them, but we know about it. You know what I'm trying to say. All right.
I do.
Okay, thank you for a change, right? Moving on to Alice, uh, special policy task force, and the policies begin on page 105.
Okay, so I'd like to get a motion to approve JKAA physical restraint of students' policy, which we've already revisited before. Um, there have been no changes, and does anyone have any remarks? Did you get any comments? Did anybody have any remarks?
I had one, I think, if you look under where the superintendent will develop procedures identifying.
Hang on.
It's sort of the middle of, the middle of page.
I have to get to it, wait a minute.
Middle of page 106.
Well, known as page 25.
Yeah, or?
Uh, superintendent shall, will develop procedures identifying.
Okay, just the, one, two, three, fourth bullet, descriptions of the school's training, blah, 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 but not limited to making reasonable. blah, blah, but not limited to making reasonable efforts. I wonder if we just want to say, but not limited to orally notifying a parent. It, it sounded like, well, I tried very hard, but I didn't get hold of you.
Um.
I'm sorry I didn't notice it earlier, but I just, it just jumped out at me.
Amy not being here, I don't feel comfortable telling you what the right answer is.
Well, that's okay, but maybe you could talk to her about it, or someone can. But it, because it sounds like, well, you could try hard, but you don't really need to, to notify them, I thought, and I think that's probably not the, the point of it.
It's probably that it's sometimes it's almost impossible to orally notify some, some people.
But within 24 hours?
Yeah. It would definitely be impossible.
Especially if they don't want to be notified.
Yeah.
What, parent, guardians don't want to be notified?
Yes.
Absolutely.
They won't answer the phone?
Yeah. Don't, don't open the email, right.
Well, anyway.
Gives us enough, I think this language has a strength, gives us leverage room, is what I want to say. It gives us room to respond in a practical manner to the world we live in.
Yeah. I, I agree. I mean, I would.
Okay, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they should not make very strong efforts or to call right in a multiple ways or multimedia way to get in touch with parents.
No, I think the point is just to make sure that the school district isn't found to be at fault if they've not been able to find someone who doesn't want to be found.
Yeah, that's quite common, actually.
Is it really?
Oh, yeah.
Well, if the school, I'm not saying this goes into policy, but, but if they, you know, document the efforts they made, they probably will be okay. But I, I think, I just want to make sure they really.
Drop procedures.
Work hard. Okay, all right. That's fine.
Okay, so, and are there any other things that people want to discuss about this policy? Seeing nothing, all in favor of the motion on the table? It's unanimous. Okay, it's unanimous now.
Nine, zero.
Uh, well, yeah, that's right, because somebody's not here. The next one in your packet, there's, there's an edit to that, which is at your station. If you look for these two sheets, one of them has yellow on it. Okay, so it turns out, the first page with the yellow on it is the red lines. You can see what's, what you're voting on. And then the second one is the clean copy that shows you what it's going to look like in the end. But I wanted you to see that the, the stuff in yellow was accidentally not deleted from the last version you got. And the reason why Amy would like to delete it is because there is no such thing as a certified instructor. So requiring them to assign certified instructors makes no sense. So she would like to have that line deleted.
So it's deleted in the final?
Yes, would be deleted, and this, this is the second reading, that would be deleted.
Okay. And just, just. First, do we have a motion to accept it?
So, second.
Okay. Did you get those two, Julia, any two? Okay.
So Alice, in the, in the line before, before what's in, what's there, it says qualified instructor. Do you think the, the intention was to call the instructor qualified rather than certified?
Um, I think, I don't know. Certified is a different thing than qualified, I guess. I mean, this.
The Department of Ed uses the term license, not certification any longer. That's one reason. The second reason is that you cannot find someone who is licensed in five or six different things to provide home or hospital tutoring. So on a practical matter, those kinds of instructors do not exist.
Alice, this is the very first line, this is a little picky. Ed, what is the technical name of the school? Minuteman Career Technical High School? Is that where are we? Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical High School?
I don't know, what do you think?
I think it's Minuteman Regional Vocational. So.
Okay, so you would like the official name of the school to be correct.
Yeah, so that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we will correct that to be the correct name.
Because now, it's now or never, or it's the next 10 years.
So that would be a change as well. Any other exciting changes to this policy?
Oh, that's not exciting.
Seeing none, we would be voting to approve this as revised.
Voting yes.
Oh, all in favor? It's unanimous. So that's second reading, those two are done, thank you.
Nine, zero, zero. Thank you, Alice, for your work on it, as always, as always.
And, and thank you, Julia.
And Julia.
And Amy, who's not here.
Whoever needs to be thanked, we thank them. Okay, secretaries report, Pam.
Okay, I moved that we approved the draft minutes of November 13, 2018 as presented.
Second, somebody?
Four.
Four? Any, any, were there any, were there any, did you see any change? No, nothing. Anyone have any comments or suggestions? All right, all in favor? Eight, zero, one.
No, it's an eight.
Eight, zero, did you have your hand up?
I was.
So it's eight.
I was, I was, just for a part of it, should I, should I?
Yeah, you can vote.
You have to abstain if you're here.
Yeah.
You can actually vote, even if you're not.
You can if you want to, or you can abstain.
Approve in the minutes you're not certified.
Okay, let's hear, all in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four.
Okay, who is definitely abstaining?
Five, six, seven. All, all opposed, abstaining. Jennifer, you abstaining?
I'm staying.
So it's seven, zero, two. Okay.
Who's the other abstainer?
Me.
Belmont.
I thought you said.
And Lancaster.
Oh, okay.
All right? Okay. Pardon me?
Lancaster.
Okay. Do we have a, we need to take a roll call vote on going to executive session in which we also mentioned, who would, Alice, you'd like to do the, the honors and also do, do say who would be staying for the, for the executive session?
For the executive.
Yeah, and also go.
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Go, right, yeah.
So, to enter in the executive session, I follow P, that's strategy session, the person who votes to certainly not, who can personally, who has a burning session for 100, 100 people that are being presented. B, intended, we use the thousand real properties to carry, to, 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 on a negotiating position of the public body, and then going back to the first page of the agenda, 05, as we said in the executive session, we will develop a memorandum of a change of kind of flexing of the public, like, still to, 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 benefits to get this problem, and that's the, and that's the, and it's the memorandum of understanding.
And then phase, and then phase two, request. Okay, do you have a second?
Second, second. And, and who will stay?
And who will?
So.
Well, Ed, Kevin, are you staying for that?
I'll be leaving for one part of it. I'll be back for this.
Okay.
For B.
Jack, are you staying? You can stay if you want to.
Jack wants to.
Good night.
Jack wants to go home.
We're not to, and we won't, will not come back to open session.
Because, because we have, we've had a couple of executive sessions recently, and we have 10 minutes for them. Next time we have an executive session, we should try to catch up.
Yeah, and, and Julia and I talked about that. So we'll do it for the next, next one.
Ed, who do you want to stay for that? Do you want Kevin?